Reporting in progress.
All right, so first question, signs it is a prostate cancer. What are the symptoms? Which one's correct? My pee there's a red tinge, is that correct? And they have painless bleeding? Yeah or no? Yeah, they can have pain if they if it erodes into the the ureter, yes, they can bleed, right? Same thing like colon cancer, it erodes into the lumen of the of the colon and they can bleed and ooze, right? May have to have a digital rectal exam. It's not a sign and symptom, but it's a diagnostic test, but we just make sure that that lines up, right? So yeah, it's it's correct as a diagnostic test, but I would not do that to you, I'd probably make it, you know, on D R E I find what? So on D R E we find a greater than three finger breasts, greater than three foreign bodies on a rectal exam. That would be incorrect, right? So if it said, or if it said, I have more than three finger breaths, that's B P H, right? I'd also probably tell you that it's smooth, right? What would make it correct? That is bumpy, right? All right, see, I may have to awaken for my slumber to pee. Yeah, they have the the funny symptoms, right? And the wise symptoms. If it's big enough, right, I will have to pee a lot during the day. Yeah, that's urgency, right? And then my urine may be positive for nitrates and leukocyte estradies. It's a complication, again, it can, but again, I probably would not mix them up for you, I'd probably separate them out, that this is a complication. And that's a, you know, these are like symptoms, that way you're kind of you're clear, and you can identify it, right? So you can say, I don't know, what would be another option? Yes? All right, so how did you change that one?
That's what I'm saying more about.
So P S A, you can do diagnostic tests, right? So that's, you're kind of mixing up diagnostic tests and symptoms, that's fine, but what else did you say? There's another symptom for prostate cancer. Unintended weight loss, probably a good one, I was probably changing that to unintended weight loss. And intended weight loss. Okay, all right, and let's make the rationales line up, whoever had that to that question, right? Oops. All right, next one. Six year old man is diagnosed with B P H, how could this happen? Right down here, bottom. All right, how does that, how does that happen? These are all status, right? So incorrect is, we would not ask, right? We would ask which one of these would you would would happen, right? So can we change it to correct? Are correct, right? So let's let's change it, make sure the rationale is line up too, okay? So decreased testosterone, is that correct? Is it yes, that's incorrect, or no, that's incorrect, or no, that's correct? So decreased testosterone. Is that a a cause of B P H? Decreased testosterone, yes. Okay, yeah, so make sure that you were all the positive, we're not trying to trick you, all right? Older age. Yes, right? Decreased estrogen. No, right, wrong gender. And then increased blood flow to the prostate. No, that would, to make that correct, we'd say decreased blood flow, right? Hyper gonadism. It'd be hypo, would be indicate would also indicate decreased testosterone, right? So that's, if that's a hypo, yes, that would be, that would line up, but increased testosterone does not cause B P H, right? This is, to just convert this to what? Increased testosterone. And you have to ask yourself, does increased testosterone cause B P H? No, right? All right, so please line up question up, so it makes makes sense. Right? And we'll save this or trash, do you want to save these drawings or no? They don't look that beautiful. All right, so then next one at the bottom here. Rectal dysfunction does not understand why. Okay, so what is it saying? So understand why, the nurse knows the patient understands teaching about why they have E E D, right? So it's causes of E D. So what caused it? Is A correct, I'll continue taking my azepam, my GABA. Gabbernergic will suppress nerve activity, so, right? This is a GABA, right? And then increased GABA equals E D, right? Okay, we're not testing you on benzos, I probably would not, you know, convert it to a to a benzo, right? And there's nothing that we talked about was, maybe we talked about few benzos for like back pain and such, but anyways, I'll only do a little cocaine when I'm drinking Hennessy with friends. You understand teaching, negative, right? I have a nursing school final on Friday and I'm so stressed out, I need to try and relax. That'd be yes, right? I don't know why I have time for activities, but I should not drive it light and everything is extra bright. I should not drive at night, does that matter? Not really, that's an eye question, but that's a good distractor, right? I'll start an exercise program after the semester and stop smoking. Yeah, they understand, right? They understand the assignment. Oops. All right, next one, all right? Nurse teacher. So GABA, I mean gabbernergic, I would probably, if I were to ask you, I'd just say it's a gabbernergic, right? It's a benzodiazepine. I'm not trying to make you, I'm not testing you on, do you recognize benzodiazepines? That was more psych, right? All right, so what is this? So the nurse teaches the patient about erectile dysfunction, they understand what? Just about in general? Or just like nurse teaching? I'll make sure to take ashwagandha. No, that is not doing anything, I will keep my vacuum device on for two weeks at a time. All right, you get attached to this thing, they're expensive, I guess. All right, Mr. My Papa Baron on the ten and two sides of my penis. Yes, ten and two o'clock, I had like ten sides of one and two sides the other. Make sure we're saying o'clock, right? I will do a monthly testicular self exam. No, you can, but that's not the best answer here, right? It's not for eating, I'll increase my zinc intake by taking supplements. Yes, that is correct. All right, let's clear all these. All right, so nurse is caring for patient post op terp. So they had a terp, right? Which symptoms are complication, right, of surgery? So pink urine and blood clots twelve hours after surgery? That's the expected finding, right? Heart rate of one fifteen, a B P of ninety two fifty five. Either there has surgery that pain, you could say that's that's normal, right? It depends if they're getting like really hypotensive, that could be bleeding, so. Irrigation of six hundred m Ls and output of four fifty. Irrigation of six hundred. So we're saying output of four fifty total, that's that's not good. We should have what's coming out, right? So what goes in, right? So here's the bladder here, right? And we're instilling urine here, or fluid, let's say, right? So you install, here's your your bag outside the patient, of course, right? And it goes in and it fills up, right? And then what should come out is urine, right? If less comes out than went in, that means you're retaining the blood, the the fluid and it can, you know, cause damage to the sutures, it can cause more and more problems. So that's not not great if the irrigation fluid is not coming out, you should always expect more, right? When we say output of four fifteen, you've got to be careful, like, I guess intake and output. If I would ask, I'd probably tell you a balance also, right? So what would be a bad balance? Which is what? Positive or negative? No, if you're negative, that means more output is coming out and it is going in, right? So the balance would be positive, right? Would equal someone that is retaining the fluid that you're giving them. If you do the eyes and nose at the end of the day and the nurse charted it six hundred this hour, eight hundred that hour, five hundred here, four hundred there, and you only output half of that, you're positive, right? All right, so now one twenty six and Billy at two nine. So Billy's unrelated, there's no kind of connection there, right? I mean, there's intraoperatively, you can get hyponatremic. But I probably wouldn't trust you on hyponatremia related to that, it's just like excessive flushing intraoperatively. What do we, who decided that about D, what was the answer on D? You you do absorb it, if you can absorb it, it's a, you know, like maybe the first day, but mostly intraoperatively. And Billy Rubin, I mean, if you're maybe getting hemolysis, but that's not, yeah, I guess, I see now, all right? So yeah, so if you do have hemolysis, that that can cause your belly to rise, right? Yeah. Elevated blood pressure, yeah, I can, yeah. So this one, I'm, yeah, I'd be concerned, I would put, if I were to test you, that's I would put a symptom here, like the blood looks like is, you know, it looks like cranberry juice, right? And then now I'm concerned, that's like hypotension related to bleeding, right? But if it's like clear, if it's clear and clear urine or his pink lemonade urine or it's, you know, hickama, right? Then we know that it's probably, it's just a normal, that's just their their baseline. I have to give you some more information for you to like make this, make make that connection that it's bleeding. Yeah, so hemolysis and hyponatremia can happen, that's probably not going to get you on on that. Okay, urinary contents after the catheters removed. It shouldn't, no, there's not, I mean, you should still have, you have control of your ureter, of your of your sphincter still, right? Right, so clear, let's clear this here. Are you want me to keep answering them, or do you want to answer them? Okay. We're not testing me, we're going to make sure that you're able to get these two. All right, what education is important for a patient with history of prostate cancer? All right, so you have prostate cancer. So education, monthly D R E? That's too fast, well, how often should it be? Should be yearly to assess it, and you know, sometimes forty five, sometimes forty, sometimes fifty, somewhere in there, right? And lose weight. Yeah, it depends, probably in the stem, I give you that they have a B M I of thirty two or something, but yeah, that's important, right? Obesity can can lead to prostate cancer. A B M I of forty, there it is, right, does not put me at risk, so that makes that incorrect, right? So they are at risk for the high high weight. Okay, and again, just test taking wise, you can't have two answers that are opposite, right? You have to, one of them has to be correct. Okay, it's impossible unless obesity has nothing to do with it, right? Like myopia, it's like, you can lose weight, sure, we'll go for it, right? All right, if you start seeing blood in the urine, you should report it to your H C P. Yes, bleeding is not not okay. All right, your lower back pain is not related to prostate cancer. That's false, it can be a complication of what? Of mets, right? All right, patient is getting chemotherapy with testicular cancer, what should be on the on the menu? So it's B E P, right? So B E P is the 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 acronym for testicular cancer, that's the chemotherapy is ninety five percent effective. So B is what? Bleomycin, right? E is? E top besides, and P is a? Is it platin or or a passitaxel? It's a, which one is it? So taxol or platin? It's a platin, right? Is that correct? All right. Let's clear all those. All right, client is valuing the result of his two medicines test in the morning, he stated, when I woke up, the bands were broken off. I need to test again. Right, how should you document this finding? All right, so it is normal that it's swelling, right? Dysfunctional and abnormal are the same thing, right? Organic or psychogenic, psychogenic? You could say it's psychogenic, I'd probably give you more information here, right? Because psychogenic means that everything works, right? But there's something that's that's only, it's only psychological, that's the the issue. Okay? So I'm going to give you something over here that, you know, patient has history of depression, anxiety, et cetera. Okay, so patient has a what? Meth head complaining of insomnia, says he can only get his meth from his dealer because he can't get it up. The client has a history of IV drug abuse, have C B P H and takes Tamsulosin, which of the following treatments would be ordered by the physician? Okay, so treatments for what? So treatments for B P H or or E D? So problem thinking E D, right? I just probably, I would just specify, there can treatment for E D. All right, so what's true for E D? You can throw some zinc at him, that's fine. So ashwagandha does nothing. Vitamin D? For the D, no, does not work. All right, and then we got a vacuum device. Sure, and you can, I'm not sure the physician would prescribe it. It doesn't require prescription, right? And I go to the the sex stores, like I need, I got a prescription, the only the only cure is, right? So anyways, yeah, so Zenefil can work as long as you don't have what in the history? Any nitrates, right? Any nitrates in the history? Yeah, so nothing there about about nitrates, if it says he takes what, what's a, like if he had a nitrate up there, question mark, right? Then that would be a situation where you say, you know, what's an example of a nitrate, right? Because the meth legacy, I'm on nitrates. If they say again? If they have a cardiac problem, what? Can they take so Zenefil? Yeah, it's going to more power to them, it's going to help. Okay, so yeah, what's an example of a nitrate? So highest sorbit nitrate is a nitrate, right? What else? Nitroglycerin, right? If they're to give that for like nine one one, that'd be a reason. Hydrolyzines are kind of left field answer, probably would not do that. Right? Are you upset that I'm not giving you complicated questions? Why would it not be contradicated? Yeah, you, I mean, it's it's not, it is on the list, so yeah, I probably would not, again, I'd make it, I would make it obvious, that's nitrate. Tamsulosin is like a, like a, it is concerning because it can lower your blood pressure, so yeah. All right, so where we at? So patient statements indicate risk factors, risk factors for prostate what? Cancer. Why is it, there it is, right? So prostate cancer risk factors, right? I can't trust my Brazilian, I still geek on it seconds, right? So select low selenium causes prostate cancer, milk and desserts are my jam, I partake in tres leches every night, right? So dairy products are associated, right? Says ask about dairy, all right, this talking about selenium. Many men in my family have been diagnosed prostate cancer, that's just family histories, that's good. Right, especially active at least five times a week, right? That equals greater than twenty one times, as long as you ejaculate. We've got to complete the deed. All right. I'm twenty five and love to go on daily runs, exercise and avoiding obesity, you could say that's that's good, right? Is that where we're going with that? All right, fifth year old man comes to medical office complaining of painful ejaculation and confidence, difficulty starting to stream, flood in the urine for the past two days, fatigue, bone pain, leg weakness. The nurse suspects prostate cancer, hopefully, right? So that is prostate cancer, has all the things, right? So we have prostate cancer, what lab test would you expect? Or diagnostic test to be expected? Yeah, we'll do a D R E to make to confirm that's there. It's not one of those things where you would not touch it, otherwise it'll start bleeding more like an O B, right? But it's, yes, you can do a D R E. Multi parametric M R I of the prostate, sure, we'll do that to just to find out the stage and how bad it is. Testicular self exam? Nope, right? Alpha fetoprotein? Which is it there or no? Is that, which one's that? That's testicular, right? And what else? Testicular and liver, right? Alpha fetoprotein, is it liver or gastric? Liver, all right? What is gastric? So gastric is C E A, okay? And then H C G? That also sounds like testicular, right? So that's also testicular. All right, not liver, though. All right, nurse recognizes patient needs further teaching regarding prostate cancer. And they say what? All right, if I choose to have a prostatectomy, I will only experience E D for the first month. True or false? That's forever, all right? All right, during ablative antigen therapy, my, all my hormone auto will be inhibited. That's true. All right, so radical anginal orchiectomy is an effective treatment for my prostate cancer. Or testicular cancer, right? That's testicular. And then durable breaky therapy, right? That's indicator for prostate cancer, will not be having sex for the first two weeks after treatment, wear condom for two weeks after treatment. That's correct, right? If I choose to get chemotherapy, I'll be on the medication dositaxel. True? Yes. It might cause E D for eyes and F things nearby, nerves and such, but it's going to be, it's, it depends, it's, it can be a complication. Breaky therapy usually is going to cause, you know, the the priority is to make sure right afterwards, they're not getting, you know, they're not getting anybody else affected. Not guaranteed, no, it's only really affecting the prostate itself. Okay? So E, what is E? It's true? All right, which of these symptoms are for what? For testicular cancer? All right, so positive T S E? Is that good? Is positive T S E a good sign or a bad sign? That's bad, right? You should have a negative testicular self exam, you should be doing the testicular self exam, and you should not find anything on it, right? So negative translumination test. So negative means something was in the way, right? So pain with ejaculation. That's kind of more prostate cancer than with that testicular cancer, right? And experiencing nocturia. So there's no prostate situation, right? This the testes are not involved with urine, unlike my six year old self thought was, I thought that's how it worked, all right? So my my, I need to go pee, anyway, swelling, hardness and redness of the testicle. That is yes, okay? All right, patient B P H understands teaching when they say what? Well, make sure to drink all my fluids for the day. At around five to six P M. At five to six P M or stop at five to six P M. Yeah, that's that's cool, right? Because they said ten P M, would that be good? No, they were, what if they work night shift? I don't know, or so, you know, don't add more information to it, okay? So yeah, usually nine, eight P M, seven P M, jeopardy time, that's the time to go to to go to sleep, okay? Stop drinking. All right, I will avoid caffeine drinks from now on. Sure, yeah, I'm probably limit would be, you know, what realistic, but avoid is 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 great. I will consult my doctor about what medication to take for my allergies. True, right? Because the histamine drugs, right, for allergies can cause worsening symptoms. I will still continue drinking two glasses of wine with every meal. That's false, they should avoid alcohol, right? I'll practice double voiding. So like double dribbling, is that a foul? What is double voiding? You pee, then you pee again, right? You try to, you try to get it all out, right? It's like you trick your bladder, it's like, haha, right? So you pee twice. That's correct. All right, so patient with what PC, they're at the P C P with B P H? And they have what? Recognizes following bladder storage issues. Probably going to have you distinguish bladder storage versus urgency, what's the other one? Bladder storage versus straining problems, probably a combination of funny and what else? Wise, right? So which one of these are a part of that, right? So complaints of dribbling urine after completing empty, emptying their bladder. So dribbling, yes, right? So that's overflow content because they're unable to expel all the urine, right? They got a double void, right? Statements of awakening three times for night to urinate, that's that's it falls under frequency, right? And then blood found in urine and urinalysis. No, I mean, you could argue that maybe it's a, they have a a U T I or there's, you know, there's something going on there, but yeah, that that'd be more of a complication than anything else. Okay, complaints of painful urination. Again, these are looking at complications, this is F D U F. Which I feel like I slipped skipped over entirely, I skipped a slide or? It was there? Yeah. Yeah. Some prostate cancer instead. All right, so yeah, so F D U F, what does that stand for? Your signs of U T I? Which can be a sign of, you know, you're not, it's a complication of not being able to pee, of having the symptoms. So what's F? That's fever, right? And they'll have the whole package, the malaise and not feeling great, right? And what's the other F? Frequency again, right? D is dysuria, right? Painful urination, which is the one right here, right? E is urgency and F is foul urine, right? All right, I need to pee four times per hour. That's kind of similar to E, but that that works, right? It's old code, but it checks out. All right, treatment of metastasized testicular cancer. All right, so you got testicular cancer, where to go? Or we're looking for treatment, sorry. So treatment of testicular cancers, it's it's what? It's the same thing, right, B E P? Okay, there's another way to ask it, right? There it is, there it is, right? Retroperitone lymph node radiation? Yeah, you could do that, do some lymph node, but you really probably do the mass itself compared to lymph nodes. So this one, I'd probably be very, very specific if I was talking about chemo and radiation, right? Should probably just say radiation therapy, if that's the correct answer. All right, so nurse assigned the patient with B P H. Okay, so what they were looking for medications for B P H? So it's just a knowledge based question, so it's very, he's like only ten percent of the questions is like, identify this, right? I could teach that to the guy that interrupted the class right now, say, hey, I want you in five seconds, why don't you, I'm going to say five, four meds and tell me which one I just told you was for B P H. Guaranteed, they'll get it right, right? He's like, oh yeah, I heard of that one, right? So these, really, we'd probably be asking like, what's a, patient's on one of these medications for B P, or a patient has this symptom? So give me a symptom of of one of these meds of the correct. Well, this, it probably would not be a stat at that point, probably because it's a multiple choice question. Do you follow what I'm saying? Right, so for instance, let's say Tamsulosin has is what, has what side effects? Ashwagandha, what is it? It's a side effect for Tamsulosin. It inhibits the S N S, right? So we got low B P, we got orthostasis, we have a patient needs to rise slowly, drink fluids, right? Be careful, right? So I'd say patient with B P H has a has had a syncopal episode because he had low blood pressure, right? Which one of these medications would it be? That'd be Tamsulosin, right? So Zenefil, there's data that you can combine it, but I would not, I'd probably be very clear, like what are what are B P H meds, right? Cisplatin, not for B P H, but for testicular cancer, right? Prostate cancer is a dositaxel, right? Finasteride, is that, is that good for B P H? It checks out, right? But again, if we change the question, that would not be correct, but if we just say which one of these are B P H meds? Yes, finasteride works, Tamsulosin works, right? And what's the next one? Festeridine, what is this? Was that one of like a prostate antigen medication, what is that? Or just made up, is your your two, your last two names put together? A muscarinic antagonist? Yeah. So yeah, it's confusing with the B P H, like do I avoid anticholinergics or do I take cholinergics? And I'm not going to make you, I'm not going to distinguish that on the test, it's basically, we want to avoid what? What should we, what should we absolutely avoid? We avoid anticholinergic, because that's going to make their symptoms worse. Anticholinergics stop, what happened? So the anticholinergic stop the ability of the bladder to empty, right? If they like spasm pains, that's where they like do risk versus benefits and they'll give them a medication, that's anticholinergic, but I'm not going to do that to you, it's going to be very clear, okay? All right, so clear that. All right, so patient displays understanding of treatment for testicular cancer. So treatment involves what or what can they do? I noticed growth differences, and you considered a section my doctor mentioned, a dissection? What are we doing? Are we doing taking out, are doing orchiectomy? And those growth differences over the next month, I need to consider discectomy? What are we looking at? What are we looking at? Who's the author of this question? I can preserve my sperm after my surgery, right? After, and that's gonna be before, right? So that may be before. And then they remove a testicle through my groin. No, I mean, testicular cancer can happen with a, you know, cryptic cortism where your testy has not descended. In that case, they probably descend the testy for them, that's really, you'll talk about that in pediatrics. Alright, surgery allowed me to be more aerodynamically, la toure de France. True story. But my sperm can be frozen for up to fifty-five years. If you live fifty-five years, yes, it's, it's, you know, it's a quality of the, of the company, right? And what's, and if you invest in that company, right? If it's offered by, by, you know, by Tesla or Trump, I might not believe in that company. Those companies have a stor, historical way of not, you know, panning out. Alright, I always worry about the people that buy into the cryogenics where it's like ten thousand dollars a month to preserve their Walt Disney head. And like, then the power goes out, so what are you gonna do? Anyways. Alright, is that it? So we got some more. Alright, you've got one more. Twenty-four-year-old has what? A father that has testicular cancer. And which the following demonstrates understanding of testicular cancer. Because my brother wasn't diagnosed, I'm not at risk. Well, your father puts you at risk, so I should have the flashlight that doesn't shine through my testicles. I should make sure the flashlight doesn't shine through my testicles. If it does, I might have cancer. That's false, right? I should do a yearly testicular self-exam. No, right, that'd be a, a D R E by a provider. You can do a D R E every night if you want to, twenty-one times a day if you want, or twenty-one times a month if you want, and it makes you ejaculate, great, right? But that's not gonna be, by a provider, it needs to document in your record that you had a, um, D R, a D R E. But to stick yourself exam, should we be done how often? Monthly, right? And sure the size and shape are not changing, good. Alright, since I'm short Hispanic male, I'm the highest risk of developing testicular cancer. So who's at risk? Tell white dudes. Alright, gotta end credit scene here, cool. Alright, what findings put the risk for testicular cancer? So older brother had it, father had it. I drink whole milk, and my protein shakes, is dairy put you at risk for testicular cancer? Or is it prostate cancer? Or both? This is prostate, right? And I've been making an effort to ejaculate twenty-one times a month, that is also prostate. You can go, go for it, but, a sixty-five-year-old male client. Alright, that's, that's weird, alright? Well, how'd you find a sixty-five-year-old male client with your patient? Alright, that's incorrect. Alright, so was that helpful? Alright, so you can see if we go back to the top here, I'm trying to go all the way to the top without. Oops, just drag this here. Alright, did a long way, hold on. Alright, if you, if you look at the top here, like questions we did not ask, right? These are only possible questions you can ask. You can ask causes, you can ask treatments, you can ask these things. What do we not ask about? We asked all the questions, right? And as far as like specific diagnosis tests, you could throw D R E on there, like how it's done and what, what the findings are, right? You could throw a few meds on there, like we talked about, uh, you know, like Tams, we talked about Sedentif a lot, right? We didn't ask about, you know, the synoptic vision, right? We can ask, you know, more teaching about, we did some, some, some nitrates, but, you know. The other thing we didn't, we didn't add is like medications or diagnosis tests, so the only, or maybe some procedures, or when the detailed procedures, like TERP, is this, we went into detail about, like, do they understand that they're gonna be on a C B I? Do they understand they might ejaculate backwards? They understand that they are, uh, you know, they're gonna be impotent, or impotent, have erectile dysfunction, right? So that's the only other question we could ask, right? Alright, so let's take a break and then we'll do the other, the other deal, eyes and ears. Alright, so eyes and ears and questions for eyes and ears. Alright, so, let's do the first ones, also do this. Alright, R N knows what? MAC, wet M D, what is wet M D? It's where you get your diagnosis, right? When you have symptoms. So wet M D, they have, uh, how do you know someone has wet M D? They have what? Straight lines become wavy? Yeah, that's your, that's your Amsler test, right? Amsler, and then they got central vision loss, is that true? Yes, they have central, right? So those two are correct, painless, slow vision loss. Say again? Dry, I mean, it's, it's going to happen, because dry has to happen first, right? So it will be vision loss, and then difficulty recognizing faces. That's true, right? Changed color perception. No, that is what? The sepia one, which one's that? That's sepia one, that's cataracts. Okay, so yeah, so all those are, are true for MAC degeneration, and if you want to kind, like, television, difference, difference between wet and dry, really, I would just say like which one's more severe? Which one requires injections, intravitreal injections, right? So we're not gonna be doing that for dry and M D, you'll be doing that for the wet M D. And also wet M D is more, like we said, more severe and they're higher risk for blindness. Alright, let's clear all that. Alright, so after having pneumatic retinoplexy. Alright, so what do we do? What statements may show they understand? Right, I will lay with my head upright or sideways for the next two days. That's fine, as long as they're not what? This good, just not supine, right? After this procedure, I can see my back. We just said that is supine, so that's not good, right? If the gas bubble pushes on my lens, inside of my retina, I could develop glaucoma. Yes, it's, I would say intraocular pressure elevation. Increase I O P, not gonna get glaucoma, right? It's like, I need a marijuana card now, right? That's not gonna be the, the ultimate priority, that, that, it's not gonna develop like chronic glaucoma. Right, because the bubble dissolves in like four-day weeks, right? And this will take one week for the gas bubble to reabsorb. Well, shoot, I gave away the answer. What, so what is, we say four to eight weeks, alright? So that makes it incorrect because it's four to eight. So easily, it could be, on the exam, it could say four to eight, right? That's why we want to have the rationales there. Alright, this procedure will restore all of my vision loss. It's not guaranteed, it's going to prevent, you know, and hopefully you heal up. Alright, so let's clear that. Alright, which patient's statement says they have what? Astigmatism? Alright, so they have astigmatism. What are? Yeah, symptoms, right? Sort of like a symptoms of astigmatism. Symptoms, I see cast from my house at night when the lights are on. Yeah, ghostly flickers, that's how that is, right? So it's not like sightings, it's like, it's like ghosting, right? So there's like, you know, ghosting images, right? So if you like have a like fifty-six, fifty-six K modem down, you know, and then like you, you know, the patient goes to the side, it looks like they're ghosted, right? But it's the same person, it's almost like double vision. Alright, I can see far but not near. Astigmatism, they will have a combination of these things, we don't know what, what their discrepancy would be, right? So they would have B and C, but like, like specifically if we're saying astigmatism, it's, we have to give you that information, right? People sneak up on me easier. That'd be what? That'd be hearing loss probably, right? The presbycusis. Bycusis. I have headaches and feel nauseous. That's true, right? So definitely A and E, B and C can be correct, right? If I were to say they were correct, I would say that, you know, in part of my vision fields or in this part of vision fields. Alright, so the patient with myopia understands treatment for their condition. So treatment for myopia, so myopia is what kind of eyeballs? Oops, draw. Alright, so it's super, super curvy eyeballs, right? So we have to make it less curvy, or we have to introduce what? Concave glasses, right? For my contacts, concave and convex, so the and makes it incorrect. I will, I can get an implanted contact lens to correct my vision, yes, they can. I can get scleral buckling procedure to improve my, my myopia. My Verona, no, that is not gonna, that's not gonna do it. I can use Latana prost to cure my sight. So this is to maintain for who, for what chronic disease? For chronic what? Starts with a G. Glaucoma, right? It's one of our prostaglandins, prostaglandin drops. But what eye drops do my patients get? Saline, there's not much else you can do, right? Drop wise. They might get eye drops to get, like the retinal exam, but not for, to fix their vision. Our patient asked nurse, what possible causes are there for M D? Right? So M D causes, caused by aging? Yes, more common in men than women? What is it? Yeah, I would not ask you that, right? Again, you're not gonna be like, you know, patient comes in or the patient's getting, getting blind, like it's one more women than men. Right, you're not gonna run in the room and try to, and try to, you know, drop, drop facts at them, right? It's like, it's a sixty-two percent, right? Alright, so it's going to be, it's gonna be more important things like aging, right? That'd be an important thing to know, it's like, oh, I got this because of my age, huh? Yes, you did, right? It's an important reason, right? Because they can't fix their woman or man, especially at eighty, eighty years old, right? M D is more common when you have a family history. True, hypertension does not affect my possibility of developing M D. So this is what are possible causes, so that makes that a wrong answer, right? Because hypertension does put your risk for M D, vascular issues, right? And proper intake of zinc will help. Is zinc good or, or no good? So A Reds is good, and does A Reds have zinc in it? Yes, so zinc is alright, alright, so we got zinc for, which other disease process? Zinc for E D and M D, right? There's a connection. It's, they have to have D zinc. Okay, so we got a patient having faco emulsification. Alright, so where do they go? Beam me up, alright? Of their right eye, what should you expect or what should you teach the patient after they have faco emulsification? So what the fake is faco emulsification? Jamba juice, is that what you said? Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna, you know, blend up their eye with a little Vitamix, right? Specifically which part of the eye? The lens, right? So the lens, they're gonna, you know, they're gonna peel it, peel back the cornea. And they're gonna go in there and they're going to emulsify the lens and they're gonna suck it out, right? So that's faco emulsification for what, what disease process? Why would they need to fix, take out their lens? Because they had cataracts, right? Presbyopia, yeah, you can use a presbyopia too. Alright, you need to sleep for prone for forty hours. No, that is for what, what disease process? This is for retinal, detachment, but also which, which retinal detachment procedure is that? It's one where the, the ophthalmologist passes gas. And then they do the procedure on you? No, kidding, so they, that's where they put gas, introduce it into the, into the eyeball. Okay, so every twenty minutes for ten seconds, you should look at an object fifteen feet away. So I'm not going to give you numbers that are like eighteen seconds, you didn't do it long enough. No, it's, I'll be, you know, specific, or I make it, you know, a different exercise that we've learned in the past. I'm trying to think of what, what else we would, I don't think we've ever done like a routine like that. But every twenty minutes, yes, you should do it for twenty seconds, the twenty, twenty, twenty rule. But I'm not gonna be granular like that and, you know, be off by a little bit, okay? So yeah, so if we change this to twenty, this would be all correct, right? So make that as correct. Alright, you should decrease your fluid and fiber intake to reduce constipation. They should not strain on their eye, their new eye, because they have sutures, so they should, they should have good, good diet and avoid constipation. That's important for, you know, for reducing I O P, right, intraocular pressure. So we're saying that's true or false? Oh, sorry, I, I say increase and reduce? I read this as increase, so you should decrease is incorrect. Right, if it said increase, that would be correct because you want to avoid constipation, right? So decreasing constipation is achieved by increasing what? Fiber and fluids. Okay, before giving eye drops, wash your hands. Before opening the bottle, no, but I'm not gonna, again, I'm not gonna get really granular and specific like that, right? So it'll be more, you know, administration for administration, right? Is, would be correct. You should sleep supine on your left side with head of bed elevated fifteen degrees. So that is for, for what disease process? For GERD, right? Not for, for eye stuff. I mean, you don't want to be upside down, you know, that's gonna increase your intraocular pressure too. Or did I give you a specific position for eye stuff? Thirty degrees, yeah, so I wouldn't, yeah, it would make sense, it would not, maybe be, be way too flat, right? So anyways, that's that one. Sixty-five-year-old complains of being able to, unable to see things that are close to them, so they're nearsighted or farsighted? They're farsighted, right? They can, they can, they have sight for far things. But not near things, right? So what can you do to fix that? So you have, they're farsighted, which is also known as hyperopia, or they could also have what? Presbyopia, okay, so convex lenses? Convex, yes, right? Concave, no. Magnifying glass? Sure, you can do that, that's gonna be some convex lenses. A keratomie, keratotomy? That's where they're gonna go in, they're gonna slice open the, the, the cornea, right, the kera? You would have to specify which one, I mean, a lot of them do, well, are going to make it, uh, well, only, only one of them does, right? Makes it so they're actually more convex, we have to specify which kind of keratotomy it is, right? And then, like I said, Lasik surgery, yeah, you can do Lasik surgery to fix it. It says like the Russian one, no, that's, that's, that makes it, that makes it flatter, right? So we have to specify which one this is. So to make that correct, which one will we, will we say? Because I say what, and what Lasik stand for? Is it laser assisted or is it laser? Laser assisted institute keratotomy, Camillu of, you know, cognitive behavioral therapy. Anyways, we got intraocular lens implant, can they do that? Yes, they can, they can get lens implants. Okay? Alright, so patient complains of blurry vision, especially at night. And how would they manage their symptoms? I always the brightest lights when I'm doing my homework at my desk. Is that correct? Maybe you can't, you should have more lights, but, that's not gonna fix the problem to manage your symptoms. I guess they have blurry vision to allow more light in? Yeah, and this is a sign of what, what symptom, what disease process is this? Which one? Astigmatism, right? It can also be some cataracts, because the lens is affected, is, can also cause, you know, you know, some problems, I'll probably give you some more symptoms than, than just poor vision at night, right? Because cataracts can have that too, so to give you specific symptoms, like, or do they have problems in misshapen lenses, or they have a, what else? I don't know, anyways, we got, I will use the brightest lights, I will take my little Latana prost drops. Okay, so that's for pressure, right? And that's for glaucoma, right? So not for, for this one, glaucoma does not have any ghosting effects or night vision problems. I'll need to wear my lenses given to me by, after my ortho keratology and every three days. Every three days, I mean, you have to wear it and then it'll go, it will resume, it'll come back to normal after three days if you don't wear it, right? So they need to wear it pretty much all the time, so just like retainers. I will take frequent breaks when I use my computer to do my work. That can help, yeah. I will need to wear sunglasses, I'm driving. No, it's not gonna, I mean, they're not photosensitive, that's, that was more associated with what? With cataracts than anything else, right? There's a cataract teaching. That's good for cataracts, this is good for glaucoma. Okay? Alright, so patient displays understanding post-op teaching for cataract surgery. So when my eyes are irritated, it's okay to rub them. That is a negative, right? So, or that's, that's what we, was it, we're understand, they understand it, or what? Is understanding, so that makes it incorrect, right? I can't wait to binge watch all the Harry Potter movies. As it sound like the rest in their eyes, but they finally got time off. I don't know, you can listen to them on audiobook. Alright, when I have tears, I will wipe them from my inner canvas to outer canvas. Or front to back, or what are we gonna do here? Entered to outer, outer to inner. Entered to outer is good, alright, I will notify my H C P if what happens, I feel pain, visual disturbances, because that's meaning we have what? Retinal detachment, that's important to, to teach. Right? Uh, I will have a variety of vegetables with every meal. Yeah, I probably put some fluid in there too, just to, so you're kind of cluing you in that it's constipation, right? Alright, because we want to decrease constipation, so that's, that's correct. Alright, which patient would you expect to have hyperopia? Right, which is what, farsighted or nearsighted? Hyperopia means you can see things that are far, right? Far is clear and near is blurry, right? I can see near objects clean and far objects blurry. So that is false, right? I can see a curtain over my eyes. That is what? Retinal detachment, okay? Anywhere readers in order to see. That's true, yeah, they can, they can work, right? They probably should get some prescription lenses, but they, they can work, and presbyopia? Has hyperopia. Alright, and I can only see far objects clearly. Yeah, so again, when you're doing this as a SADA, don't choose both, right? That's not gonna be possible, right? You say, well, they come in a stigmatism, I'd have to really give you the, the topography map, everything, I'm not gonna do that to you, okay? My convex glasses help. Yes, right, want to bring it to focus, their lens is too what, flat or too, or their cornea is too flat or too rounded? Too flat, right? So we need to add some convexity to it, right? What's the call, the B B L, is that what you said? Right? Alright, so patient presents to ER with little floating specs and, and their vision. What's in the patient's chart? It sounds like an expletive, what in the patient's chart, right? Would the nurse recognize the likely cause of floaters? So history of cataracts a week ago? Cataract surgery, that could do it, because floaters we gave you were, uh, possible retinal detachment. Usually the reason for floaters would be they have a, um. Because we have someone on the cornea, the cornea is dirty, or they might have di- some diabetes problems, but we're not gonna test you on diabetes. Alright, A one C of nine point two percent. Floating specs? I mean, it really, diabetes does put your risk for relative detachment. You could, you could say it does, I O P of twenty? No, so intraocular pressure does not cause like retinal detachment. Okay? They're just currently taking carbicol, carbicol for their glaucoma. No, and then patient has history of sickle cell disease. Causing some vascular issues and causing some, you know, some retinal detachment, yeah, it could, so this is assessing. What causes re- retinal detachment, right? Is that true? So corroborated, that's good? Alright? Which of these are concerning? For a patient with retinal detachment, that could indicate retinal detachment, I always have a fly in my way that I could never catch. Yeah, they got floaters, sorry, I difficulty recognizing faces. That's M D, right? I see flashing bright lights everywhere. That is concerning, the walk away on the streets looks very wavy. That's also what? M D, there's always seems to be a cobweb in front of me making it hard to see clearly. That's true. What are appropriate, what, teaching for pneumatic retinoplexy? Are these the actual answers of those distractors? Alright, patient heads upright. Or sideways for forty hours. That's true, sleeping supine? No, prone to make that correct, right? Teach the patient to follow up for bubble removal in four weeks. False, right? I'm here for a bobolectomy. Okay, report any signs of floaters and vision light flashes. Yeah, that could mean it's returning, right? Uh, the bubble what is going to expand over the next few days to seal the tear? Yeah. Okay? So six year old male patient? And his wife present, the wife does notice the nurse has what? Showing annoying behaviors and suspects hearing loss, right? And what else? Which of the fine behaviors indicate that? Whenever he's watching the news, it's so loud even neighbors can hear it. True, right? Lily, when he gets up every morning, complains he is dizzy, has to sit back down. So if you're hearing stuff, I mean, you could get, uh. You can get tinnitus and can get some nausea vomiting from that, but this is more someone that has many years, right? I would say that's someone who has, suffers from vertigo. Right, so that's, that's vertigo or biniers. Right? Normally he's such a chatterbox, loves to go bingo every Tuesday, but he's withdrawn. That's true for hearing loss, he has always been so soft spoken, but lately he's always shouting. That's true, alright, it makes me repeat my words. That is true also, alright? Is that good? Alright, after M V A, uh, states several reasons why is eye, eyes has to blame. Which would be a sign of astigmatism? Opacity of the eye. That would be cataracts, right? That's the only one where the, you actually see it on, on, when you do a pupil exam, right? Like the other ones, like refractive disorders, you have to have an ophthalmologist take a look, right? You can't like, you know, assess, it's like, that's a two, plus two diopter, you got, you got some hyperopia, right? You can't, you can't assess that. Or distorted vision where lights have a ghost in effect. That is true. Okay, increased conia of the cornea due to eye rubbing and squinting. True, right? Decrease intraocular pressure. No. Increase would be glaucoma, and even glaucoma is not a symptom of, um, cat, of what we're looking at, of a stigmatism. Alright, understanding my op- understands myopia when they say what? I shouldn't study in dim lights. True, alright, I have a flat cornea. Flat cornea, no, they have a curvy cornea, cornea, right? So I shouldn't work out in the sun. That's unrelated, that's related to what? To cataracts, right? And then working as a gardener at a scorpion farm. A risk for pancreatitis, but, uh. I should, and also Don Hodgkins, right? They're, they're a pesticide, pesticide farmer on a scorpion farm. The bad, wrong business dude. Alright, I should avoid playing computer games for eight hours continuously. Someone has a teenage son, alright, so. That is correct. Alright, high pain visual changes and had cataracts removed, that equals. Retinal detachment is the first thing I'm concerned about, right? So what would be the priority intervention for someone that has retinal detachment, right? That we're looking at, or we're just looking at cataract sur- surgery? Like priority, this is like a multiple choice, right? Visual changes, eye pain, usually retinal detachment does not have eye pain. And they don't usually get glaucoma, but I guess, yeah, I guess we're looking at. Increased I O P, right? So we're looking at. You got, because eye pain, or the only one we gave you for eye pain was I O P, right? Which is glaucoma, and yeah, cataracts, if you have, you know, increased pressure there, that could cause some intraocular pressure issues. Ginkgo Bubba, what's, what's ginkgo bubba for? Who gets, who gets that? For what? For many years, yeah. So reassure client and tell them this is a normal post-op finding. No, they should not be, have pain afterwards, right? Elevate head about thirty degrees to decrease intraocular pressure, that's giving you a clue that intraocular pressure is, is causing this. Right? So you could elevate the head of bed, right? For the meantime, but, you know, to find the, the high, the healthcare work, healthcare provider is important also. So which one is the right one? They got eye pain, we can, we can do something before we let, let them know, so that's the only one that's kind of correct. Right? So we're going with that? Right, so report to H C P, so we'd like, let's actually just leave things to, to like what you can do, what's something else you could do? Since it's a multiple choice, we just like a wrong answer. So it's another intervention that'd be incorrect. You have to dou- double dribble? Double dribble, alright? Is incorrect. Okay? Alright, client spouse says he's always talks very loud, always repeat himself, lays on the TV, what are some nurse considerations when interviewing? So what are some strategies for someone who's hard of hearing? Repeat them at least two times? No, you can rephrase it, right? Alright, so rephrase would be the correct answer, rephrase. Take client to a private room? That's true, to avoid excess stimuli, speak louder next to the better ear. You could, or you could be on the good side, right? Face the client when speaking to them. It's a multiple choice, the better answer would be D compared to C. Uh, use a low tone voice when squeaking to the client? Yes, alright, don't squeak and make sure that you are speaking in a lower voice, okay? Potential cause is the cataracts, what causes cataracts? Lifeguard. Outdoor activities can put you at risk for cataracts, and if they are that severe. You can have like a fifty five year old lifeguard out there, with, you know, the, the black tan lines and everything, it's like, yeah, you gotta, you find, find something else to do. You'd be a lifeguard supervisor, alright? I'm more at risk for getting cataracts because my mom and grandma have it. It is congen- it is associated with, uh, congenital, right? I'm sixty five, my age will not affect my chance to get a cataracts. Is that true? No, you, age is a risk factor, right, for cataracts? I should stop squinting. That's more for stigmatisms, right? And I should start going to the gym and stop smoking. Inflammation pr- pretty much causes everything, right? So I, if I had to guess, I didn't know, I'd probably choose that. Alright, nurse is caring for seventy six year old who had, can't recognize his grandchildren, who's standing right in front of him. Alright, I see fine, right? When he's standing by my side, hold on. Right in front of me, can't see him, but you can see him on the side. So we're saying that he can't see? In the middle? Is that what that's saying? Alright, so you can see him here, but not here? Is that what we're saying? Alright, so what are we, what are some treatments for this, and what is this? This is macular degeneration, right? I probably give you more clues, or I'll give you an actual picture, right? So again, I told you guys that there'll be pictures on the test of, of vision disorders, and what is this, right? So how do you fix it? Zinc can help, but I mean, that's, that's usually to prevent the progression of it. If they have like wet M D, you could get some intra vitreous injections of what? So there's nibs we talked about, and it's one of them, which one is it? Is a, so it's all apply? So both those correct, E D N E? Right, so those are the, those are fancy meds that cost like thirteen thousand dollars per treatment, they have to get every three to six months. Right? Meniere's disease, which is the following, demonstrates understanding of how Meniere's disease works, right? A patient with Meniere did not hear the, or feel the tuning fork on one side of their head. Hear or feel, or we don't really care about feel, we care about hearing, right? Are you seeing like conduction, they, they, they don't hear the conduction? Right, because is this sensory neural, or is it a, um, obstruct, what do they call it, destructive, what do they say? What are the two types, sensory neural and conducive, right? This is a conductor problem or a, uh, sensory neural problem. Is a sensory neural problem, right? So they would not hear the air conduction if it was on, with Renee's tests, right? So one side of their head, what are we saying, a patient that goes Meniere's would not hear the tuning fork, and we'd have to specify. Like air conduction, so they can't hear the tuning fork, right? Like feel, yes, conduction, you can feel it kind of, but you can, you're hearing it, because it conducts, it conducts to the bone. So I would specify that it is sensory neural, right? A sensory neural loss. Okay, high sodium diet is the ideal diet. No, they need a low sodium diet, right? Tinnitus is only caused when they drink. Too many stories so far concerts. What is stories so far, I'm not a tip. Okay, so, I mean, I know the era is to her, I don't know the story so far. Alright, anyways, the stagmus is only seen when clients drink too much alcohol, and it's not often seen in Meniere's. So D, is that part of Meniere's or not? Nice stagmus. Yes, it is, right? And then client does with Meniere's often fears moving their head. Because they'll get dizziness and vertigo, right? So vertigo is a feature, dizziness is a feature, and nice stagmus is a feature as well. And tinnitus as well, alright, so clear all those. What statements show concern? For cat, for cataracts? Headaches, nausea, vomiting? Yep, that's everything, every vision problem that has that, so that checks out. I can see the center of your face. Or I can't see. It's like, oh, cool, good job, but no, I can't see the center of your face, that is what? That's knack of the generation, right? The light has really been bothering me, so I had to buy new sunglasses. Photosensitivity, cataracts, I mean, really, they're gonna be having more light, they're gonna want more light in, in the, in their world, so they can see things. More than anything. So what was, where, where are we going with that? Lights can cause it, cataracts, like too much light can cause cataracts. They wouldn't like, they, they're not like photosensitive. It's not like light, maybe like the meningitis, or like, oh, I don't like the light, it's not like, it's not, that's not what we're looking at with, with cataracts. Is it me or there ghost orbs floating around the room? So usually the ghosting is the astigmatism, right? My vision has been really cloudy. That is true, right? So E is true, and nausea vomiting is true. Right? And this we have to, we have to change. Alright, and that's it for those ones, did that help? Okay? So honestly, if I recorded the lectures for the next group, would you listen to lecture? And then come to class and do something like this? Or to just like a textbook situations, yeah, I read the chapters, let's, let's go.